... meeting. I just want to remind everybody that Westford Cat is here, so they will be recording tonight. And the first thing I'd like to do is open up the public hearing. Do I hear a motion for that?
You have to open the public hearing.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to, first of all, before I get to open the forum, do you have something to say, Joe, then, I guess, or just?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair. So just a friendly announcement about special town meeting coming up Monday 21st, 7:00 PM. Check-in will start at 5:30. It's at Westford Academy. There will be some satellite parking as well at the Robson, Christopher, and Abbott Schools with shuttle service provided. Ten articles on the agenda, a few zoning bylaw amendments. But anybody who's interested in attending, feel free to start showing up as early as 5:30. If for some reason we need to go to a second evening, it'll be the following Monday, October 28th. So again, special town meeting, October 21st, 7:00 PM, Westford Academy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. The first item I'd like to just do is I know since Scott isn't here, we have to appoint an associate member for tonight. Would either gentleman like the...
Why don't you go ahead?
All right. Jeff? All right, so Jeff?
He needs a training.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave. So the first item would be the minutes for August 21st, 2024. Does anybody have any comments or corrections?
Can I make a motion to approve as submitted?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, great. So the first item we have tonight is for 115 Depot Street, and it's a public hearing to consider the application of Constance Benoit for the Benoit Family Living Trust for a variance from Section 7.2.7 of the zoning bylaw to remove the density bonus requirement and remove the age restriction on the unit as shown on Lot 5 on the Tall Pines subdivision plan. So do I have a motion to open up the public hearing, rather?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I see Attorney Robbins is representing, so would you start?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farrell and Robbins. As you stated, we're here tonight for a variance request from Section 7.2.7 of the Westford zoning bylaws. It's a variance request I've actually only asked of this board once before since I started practicing law, and in this case, it will be to remove the 55 and over requirement from this particular unit. As you stated, the applicant is listed as Constance and William Benoit, but they are actually here for the benefit of Constance's mother, Pauline Thompson, who was the resident of this unit. Pauline has been a resident of Westford for two decades, but she can no longer live in this home. The bedrooms are on the second floor, and since she just turned 90 years old, she needs the help of her family who lives in a different part of Massachusetts. For half a year now, they've been trying to sell this unit. Numerous price reduction, months of open house, lots of inquiries, zero offers, all due to the fact that this has a 55 and over age restriction. Just to give you a little bit of background, I know that Joe has the plan up behind you. I also do not have an engineer with me tonight, so I brought a board here. So if you'd like to look at the hardboard, you can. But this unit was approved as part of the Tall Pines definitive subdivision. It was used, created, excuse me, created by the flexible development bylaw, which allows for the basic number of dwelling units, which in this instance was four. So the base number of units you could get in this development was four. But as this board knows, that the flexible development bylaw also allows for bonuses. That's why the people use it. Generally speaking, you build more affordable units, you build age-restricted units, you create more open space, you get more market units. In this instance, which I find bizarre, their base number was four, which means conventionally, they could get four market rate units on this lot without the benefit of a flexible development. But what they did was still go forward with a flexible development, create lots of open space, created two age-restricted units on lots five and six, and for some reason, never, they never were granted an additional market rate unit out here. Their bonus, for all intents and purposes, were the age-restricted units. This is why you don't generally see flexible developments in smaller lots in the town of Westford. It's because if you don't have a big lot that you can do lots of units and take advantage of the bonuses, it's not worth it. Not quite sure why they did it here, but that's what they did. I only go through that math so the board can understand that there were no bonus market rate units out here. The only bonuses created were the age-restricted units themselves, which are on lots five and six. What else is unique about this, and I've never seen this here in the town of Westford or anywhere else I have practiced law, this is Lot 5, this is Lot 6. They did not do a condominium. Instead, what they did was they built a home that was connected on the lot line, which is very strange. This is not a condition of approval of the flexible development. It's certainly not a requirement of the Westford zoning bylaw, so I'm not exactly sure why they built it this way. I'm sure many of you are familiar with this. I call this, by the way, Depot Road. The plans call it Depot Road. The assessor calls it Depot Street. One of you is going to correct me and tell me which one it is. But this is known, the left side of this house is known as 115 Depot Street. The right is 113. So for all intents and purposes, you would think this is a condo, but it's not. It's an attached home. It is taxed as a single-family, a one-family home, according to the assessor's office. The attached nature of this home in itself has made this unit impossible to sell, coupled with the 55 and over restriction. It's clearly a unique situation that is only to this house. I've not seen it anywhere else in the town of Westford. The setback here is zero. So when you ask me what's unique about this property, there is no setback. It actually sits, as you can see on the plan, to the right-hand side now. It sits on the property line. So for, this is unit 115, this half of the unit, here is the property line, that's unit 113. Again, very strange. So I think that is one clear hardship owing to the soil shape and topography out here. I think the other hardship is the 55 and over requirement itself. I think the board has seen this even recently. I know that the owners of the Hicks Farm Main Street were here to remove their 55 and over restriction, and I hate to prove Mr. Cattaldo right when he's not here. And this board is absolutely correct in removing that restriction because what Mr. Cattaldo had to say during that application was that buyers were coming to him and potential owners were coming to him and saying, "We're 55 and over. We would live here, but we're worried about the consequences of this restriction, so we might not buy in your development." So he came here for the removal of the restriction so that he could sell to these buyers, all of which, by the way, for him, were 55 and over. He was absolutely right. This unit is not selling because of this 55 and over restriction. Allowing for this variance will certainly not be a substantial detriment to anyone. There's still one 55 and over unit out here. As I pointed out, the developer received zero windfall. There wasn't a market rate bonus that he got out here in order to create this unit. The only units created additional to the market rates were lots five and six, which were age-restricted. Furthermore, 55 and over people can still buy here if they want to. It is, it would be an open purchase for anybody to come here. Removing the restriction would just allow for a starter home in the town of Westford to be opened up, which is most of the families that come and look at this. And then when they find out there's a 55 and over restriction, they're turned away. I think that it goes without saying that this has been an undue financial hardship on the owners. No fault of their own. They have tried marketing. They have tried open houses. They have lowered the price. I think the price today is down to 535. If you try to touch anything like that in the town of Westford, that's newer construction after 2,000, 1,400 square feet, you're not going to find it. So I think that's a reasonable price. They're not making, looking to make a ton of money out here. Also, I want to make it clear that this board's approval is procedural. I cannot go to the planning board to ask them to remove this as a requirement of the flexible development unless this board allows this variance. But just so it's clear, the flexible development bylaw allows for boards to give bonuses. It gives the planning board that authority, but it does not give the planning board the right to waive that. So in my initial discussions with staff, when I was going to come to the planning board to ask for a modification, they actually sent it up to town council. Mr. Genowitz and I had a conference call with council to ask if I could just go to the planning board to request a modification, and they said no. My first stop had to be here because the planning board does not have the authority to grant that relief without the zoning board first saying that they could waive the flexible development bylaw in that regard. So the relief I'm asking for you tonight is to allow for the removal under 7.2.7 of the flexible development bylaw for the number of units that are shown on the plan to be allowed without Lot 5 being a 55 and over unit. If you allow that, I then have to go to the planning board and ask for a modification of the flexible development as approved and see if the planning board will allow for the removal of that condition. So that's what I'm asking for. I think I've given the board a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer any question the board may have.
So I just, I just want to be clear myself. So with the flexible utilizing, the flexible, they didn't get those two age-restricted?
They did.
They get those, right?
That's it. That's all they got. So they'll be using the bonus. What they got was units, was lots five and six. So the bylaw reads that you can have a bonus for two age-restricted units.
Yeah.
So they did two age-restricted units, but that was really their bonus. The other lot six bonus was because of open space, and then they have another bonus that they allow under the planning board regulations if they like your overall design, which is 15 percent. I also want to be clear with the board, and Mr. Genowitz and I have run through the math. The math out here is not very clear. We think we come up with five and change and not six, but this is something that we have to discuss with the planning board should we get to that level, not something we have to worry about right now. So yes, there were bonuses.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong here. There were bonuses, but the bonuses created the two lots, lots five and six, that are the age-restricted units.
Right.
Which became this attached home.
That's what I mean. So the developer got some benefit from that.
Yes.
They got those two lots, which they never would have gotten under any other circumstance.
No, not without coming to this board for variance.
Right.
The only other way I've got additional units under a flexible development, which we did at Hawk Ridge, was to come to this board and ask for variance from the basic number of dwelling units allowed in the flexible development, and then go to the planning board with the number the zoning board's approved and get approved that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess my only comment is, I mean, this board in the past has tried to work with developers to encourage affordable housing slash 55 and older. And I guess it's just a little confusing for us because we've worked all these years to get to this point.
Sure.
And now, you know, we're hearing some people saying that, you know, they cannot sell these particular units, which I guess, one of my thoughts are, because it's a 55 and older,
Mm-hmm.
it should be less than a normal market rate place.
Certainly is.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I don't, and I'm not a realtor, I just don't know what that price point is.
Sure.
You know, the market obviously does that, right?
Right.
And so I guess one of my questions is, when they actually bought it originally, was it a market rate reduction at that time? You know what I mean?
I'd have to look at the comps.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, the four units that are behind it, Lot 1, 2, 3, and 4, the square footages of those houses that were built conventionally are quadrupled the size.
Yeah.
The assessed values of each of those houses behind them are close to a million or over a million. So there's no comp comparative within the development itself because these units are just so different. And just to your point about 55 and over, I agree. You know I'm an advocate for senior housing.
Yeah.
The issue with this unit itself is, first of all, there's no bedrooms on the first floor. So if you're going to market to somebody that's looking to age in place, this won't accommodate that. So you're looking for either an active adult that lives within the town of Westford or somebody to come in the town of Westford that's 55 and over that wants to age in place elsewhere. So that even narrows your market even more. And just to your point about affordability, and I think I just hit on it a little bit, this unit is still going to be ridiculously affordable compared to everything else in the town of Westford, just because of the nature of what it is. It's a connected home attached to another connected home. So I know that you're worried about moving the 55 and over restriction, but what you're creating is a starter home, which is also a badly needed home in the town of Westford. And if you look at the development overall, it's certainly more affordable than anything that was built conventionally. It's apples and oranges.
And I guess that's why I said that, because, you know, to your point, we were trying to preserve homes for old people like me, you know, who can stay in Westford.
Right.
So I guess that's...
It doesn't remove the ability.
Yeah. And I'm just, I'm not speaking for the board.
Right.
I'm just speaking that, you know, it just seems, it's concerning just in that, is this going to start with a slippery slope for other people coming in and wanting to change that?
Right.
You know, if the person, you know, if 114 gets it, does 113 need to get it too? So that, I guess that's my concern about that. And I understand, you know, it's unfortunate that it's not selling, but I guess I don't know, and I'm not a realtor, but is it, at some point, I would imagine it would sell, and is that the market rate, is that the market rate for an age-restricted home?
Right.
You know, I mean, that's, I guess that's all I'm saying, and I...
Well, and there's a couple other, I mean, again, age-restricted, yes, but there's a couple other variables here. The other variable is that it's a weird standalone home that's also connected on its own lot that has shared amenities, including a roof, but no condominium association.
Yeah.
So that also limits the value. And just to your point about slippery slope, remember, you look at each and every single one of these on a case-by-case basis.
I agree.
So this doesn't create a precedent for the board. If somebody came in with another age restriction and you said this is not the same as the other, this board is within the complete right of denying it, just like they're in the complete right of denying this one today if they feel as though we don't meet the requirements. I just think this one is so unique in the fact, the way that it was created, the way that it was constructed, the way that the bedrooms are on the second floor. It's really limiting the ability of this particular unit of being sold as a 55 and over.
I agree with you. It is Depot Road.
Thank you.
But people have been telling for a few years, it is Depot Road, not Depot Street.
The plan agrees with you. The plan, I think, here says Depot Road. So Peter Parent was correct when he drafted this plan, but I think the assessor's card and everything else says Depot Street.
I'm going to have a hard time voting one way or the other on this. Just, I need to know how the zoning was presented, how the building inspector at the time was able to issue a permit. What was...
Well, the good news is that it doesn't matter anymore.
Is he's not here?
Because he's gone. It was Mr. Kinney. But I will tell you that regardless of the structure, regardless of how it got built, regardless if it's touching or too close to each other or what the structure is, with a building permit, if this structure exists for more than seven years, it's now pre-existing non-conforming. So there's, doesn't, at this point, it doesn't matter. It's seven years with a building permit, 10 years without a building permit. I actually took that plan, the one to the right, the legal one, right from your document management server from the building permit application. So I know exactly what plan they looked at. They looked at that plan. But that's neither here nor there. The structure can't be changed, and all, all legal requirements to move the structure have ended. So it doesn't even matter. And I tried to look back on this flexible development and the reasoning behind it and the decision, as did staff before we went to town council, to try to figure out exactly this. What's the story there? There is no story. It's exactly what I've presented to you. They had four lots conventionally. That's Note 3 on the plan here. Yep.
Scan doesn't read.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't scan very well. But I think that if you look at Note 3, it's very hard, but it says conventional layout yields four lots. And then they did two bonuses. If you look underneath there, there's the fuzzy math for, you can take that both ways because the math is difficult to read and it was difficult to interpret. But that gets us to the two additional lots, and the two additional lots are the age-restricted lots, which allowed the bonus for themselves. So it's all there. But there's no, unfortunately or fortunately, which way you look at it, in 1998 and '9, when this went through approval, there wasn't the decisions that we have today that have a detailed narrative to tell us how we got there.
Any other questions from other board members, or?
I think I'm sort of in agreement with Jay. I'm sensitive to the situation, but I think the forgiveness is being asked for us to correct the market of what this unit is worth. I mean, nothing has changed in 20 years. You bought it as is. It was attached when you bought it. The age restriction was there. I mean, looking at the map, the builder got a, developer got a bonus because of that easement in the back. Otherwise, that would have been a conventional lot number five. But there's an easement going behind those two units. So...
I think he got an easement, they gave a trail easement, but that's for open space.
And there's gas and there's other utilities going through that easement. So, and I would almost guarantee that 113 is coming in next month to get their restriction removed. And, you know, you said it's case-by-case, but yet you let off your argument with Joe Cattaldo.
Right.
So it's going to, it's going to set precedence going forward, no matter whether, you know what I mean? So...
But in that instance...
I'm not saying, I'm not considering it.
Right.
But I have a lot of concerns with it at this point.
In Mr. Cattaldo's instance, his units actually are marketable, I think, to an age-in-place community because they are first-floor bedrooms. That's a nuance there, but I think that he actually can accommodate 55 and overs and people that want to age in place and people that are moving in Westford for this, where this is a much more difficult.
But again, you bought the unit with the bedrooms on the second floor. You haven't changed the layout of it. And I believe Joe Cattaldo voluntarily offered that as a 55 and then asked us to take it back. He didn't, it wasn't required of him.
Right.
Again, we don't have the narrative of this.
That's accurate.
I'm pretty sure those two units would not have been approved unless the developer got creative and said, "Hey, town of Westford, I want to put these two units at age restriction to help you."
Right. And I can pull, I can try to elevate the comps from back then, if that's helpful for this board, to try to figure out, not comparatively to lots 1 through 4, because obviously there's no comp.
Right. It's apples and oranges.
But to see what the market was for a lot type 5 or a lot type 6, if there is a comp in the town of Westford about year 2000, to see if there's any comparables out there, to see if I'm asking...
Yeah, I mean, I looked up what it sold for. You're asking double what they paid for it at this point.
Right.
And everybody knows real estate in Westford has increased over the years.
Yeah.
Without question.
Right.
But there's the thing of, you bought what you bought.
Right.
And now, again, 113 will be in here within a few months asking for their restriction to be lifted because we granted it to the neighbor.
Right.
And they're going to be on the same page. So again, don't take me, I'm very sensitive to the situation.
Sure.
But there are major concerns at this point, in my opinion.
Sure.
And I don't speak for anyone else.
If a market or a broker were to come in here and tell you that this is the reasonable price for 55 and over and it's just not selling, and that they've sold 20 of these units at a higher price or this price, and this particular one is not selling, is that persuasive to this board? I mean, we're happy to do the exercise. I'm happy to do the historical exercise and that exercise.
I think honestly, Melissa, it's, like you said, it's somewhat unattractive because of what it is. It's touching another unit.
Right.
The bedrooms are on the second floor. It doesn't maybe mandate the number that is being asked. I'm not a realtor. I can't speak to that.
Right.
But the new ones in town are selling, over 55 restrictions, for a lot more money.
Right.
Granted, they're bigger. You know what I mean? So...
I agree.
I don't understand, I shouldn't say honestly, that's where I'm having conflict, is, I'm sensitive to the situation, but it is what it is.
Right.
Is it the fault of anyone? The bedrooms are on the second floor. It's touching another condo, or...
It's not a condo. That's the problem.
Right. So, you know what I mean? It's just, like you said, it's a unicorn.
Right.
And...
Which is generally fantastic for variance, which is why I'm here for variance. I mean, the big grounds for variances is this unique. And when I look at it and when I advise a client to come to this board, I have to make a discretionary call of whether it's unique enough. And for those reasons, that's part of the reason why I thought that this was enough.
It is, but did the unit owner gain any benefit when they bought it as a unique unit?
Right, and I don't...
Did the developer get a benefit from being able to develop those two unique units?
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Yes. And I don't know the answers to that question.
So maybe, maybe they benefited to get into town and live in that particular unit.
Right.
And now they want to benefit getting out of town, but they can't benefit as much as they thought they would.
Right.
You know what I mean? So again, I'm speaking for me and me only. It's, it's, it's a tough decision.
Right.
Jeff, do you have?
No, I'm pretty much on the same spot as Scott.
Joe?
Yeah, I'm trying to...
Likewise.
Yeah.
Kind of a jump ball, I guess. Yeah, it's...
But...
Jay, my thoughts, you know, the way it's, it's the only, it appears to me that the only person that benefited from the planning board's decision was the developer, because the developer got to build more...
To more units.
Yeah. And because he was able to stuff these two together, he could jack up, build bigger houses and create more open space on the backside. So, you know, that being said, I think I would have some forbearance for the people who ended up with a mistake. And I frankly think it's a mistake of the planning board and a mistake of the town to allow this to have been built. I mean, I don't know for the life of me why you would attach two units unless you were trying to stuff them together. I mean, we could be sort of wise asses and go back to the planning board and say to them, "What the hell were you thinking?" But I think I would urge the board to grant the request from Melissa, maybe not happily, but I think it's probably fair to the people who have this hardship because you have a woman who can't live in this house and they have their relatives trying to sell it. I think they've made an honest effort to sell it. And you guys have pointed out that it's an oxymoron to say it's over 55 and all the bedrooms are upstairs. I mean, that's another point we should make with our colleagues on the planning board. But I, I would urge the board to support it.
Do we have anybody in the audience that is, would like to talk in favor of this project? Would you mind just coming to the...
Mic.
The mic, right. Introduce yourself, please.
It's a small room. Okay, I'm Greg Krikorian, and that's the hardware.
What's your address? I'm sorry.
How do me?
Your address?
113. I'm the owner of Lot 6.
Okay.
So we share, I'm going to add a little more, to the point of uniqueness. You're very correct, sir. The only benefactor here was the developer, and we're stuck with this dilemma. Adding to the uniqueness, there's an issue with the roof. It's also connected. So there's an issue with the roof. It's over 20 years, and it needs what it needs. So roof connected, common wall, the 55-plus properties, Mr. Cattaldo's, I'm not familiar with. But I'm, I'm thinking majority of structures have four sides. These properties have only three sides. So windows, air, ventilation, light, all of that restricted. Roof decision, when I put a mask, if you want to do anything up there, it's connected. So that's another hardship. From a perspective of buyer, you're going to look at these things. What if there's a crack on that side? Should I go over there? Everything has to be discussed. So is it fee simple, really? No. It's got tails with the neighbor. They have to do it together for the life of eternity. So the same hardship, the same uniqueness, no setback on the side where it's connected, of course. But setback is enforced everywhere else. So that's unique too. I don't know if a buyer is going that deep looking at the property, but these things are, excuse me for my voice, these things are existing. So I understand the point that it's still out there for anybody 55-plus to buy. And the price may or may not, I'm not a realtor. We don't have comps, obviously, for an obvious reason, because there aren't too many of those. The ones in Thinksborough, there's a bunch there. And, what's that? Anyway, up the hill, if somebody is familiar. It looks like a house. It's got four, it's independent. Now, recently... is familiar. It looks like a house. It's got four, it's in the medline. Now, recently, the two lots were separated as separate lots, assessed separately. But in reality, they're not separate. They have these tentacles. So, time, I'm not selling now, but the same issue, you are correct, sir. They're here today and they're gonna be here down the line with me or anybody else. It is unique. I wish I had comps or we had somebody who can speak to that effect. But this one is really unique. Setback only, zero setback where it's connected, enforced all the way around. That's another issue for me. To come here and discuss the issue with the engineer, building inspector, if I want to put something on my lot or do anything, we're connected. So it's like a bigger picture kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor of this? Anybody in the audience to speak against this? No. Can you just come to the mic, sir?
I'm one of the lots behind.
Could just provide your name, sir, and your address.
Cal Wongapally. I'm 1 Riley Road. So that's his lot four there.
Yep.
Partly have no objection. So I just want a clarification. What does the restriction removal, uh, benefit? Like what, like, does that allow expansion of the property or does that do anything else other than removing the age restriction so that it's marketable mostly? And is, for comps, is lot six a comp or not? That's the other.
You want to get, I'm sorry.
For comps, is lot, when you comp one unit to the other, is lot five comparable to lot six? Or is it both together you're trying to compare to the other one?
I think as a uniqueness, it'll, those will be the only two comps you can compare them to.
Each other.
Yeah. So.
But yes, it just opens it up to a bigger sales.
So, so does that give, allow the, any new potential buyer to expand the unit as is, or does that remove any other restrictions or?
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that if you'd like. We're asking for no other removal of any other conditions. The only condition we're asking for removal of is the 55 and over. All intents and purposes, if this, if this unit wanted to be expanded, they'd have to go through all procedures that they would go through today.
Well, I'm just here to understand what does that.
So no, the short answer is no. There'd be no other changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
So, Mr. Chair, if I'm hearing the board, I could get comps. It's just gonna be difficult. And yes, Toll Brothers is doing a big project in Tinsborough. I think those are 55 and over. There are other 55 and overs I can compare to just to try to find a value. I don't think that Balsam Circle might be a good one because they're, they're luxury 55 and overs, but I can look at some, somewhat out of Westford too and see if I can get some comps, if that would be beneficial for the board. I can also try to look in, back in history and see how much of a difference that it was when it was sold. Um, I don't know how much of a difference that makes to the board or that changes the uniqueness of the situation. Um, you know, I think, go ahead.
One thing I was just trying to think back to that time period is, why didn't they just do a duplex? Why did they go this route?
Right.
You know, I mean, that would be something to be curious if, if we had an answer. If they went this route because of.
Right.
Well, why didn't they condo it?
Oh, sorry. You can move to the mic.
It's only an acre, a half acre between the two.
Yeah. Did you, state your name, please, and your address?
Yes, Constance Benoit. I live in Rainham, Massachusetts. And this is my mess. When my mother moved to Westford from Florida, the builder told us it was a condex and that there would be master documents. That did not happen. We did not know that until after the closing. Then, I don't, it was either 2018 or 2019, the assessor's office changed it, I, I don't know if it was listed as a condominium or a condex, but then it was changed to a single family attached house by the assessor's office. Now, Mr. Krikorian's side is not the same as my mother's side. So they're not actually comparable. His was one floor and smaller. So, I mean, and yes, the roof is a huge issue because.
It's in the bottom picture, right towards, yeah, all the way at the bottom, all the way at the bottom. Yeah.
There's like a P, oh, right there. So if you look there, there's a P. We had multiple roofers come to the house and nobody will roof the house because they can't guarantee that the other side won't have a leak because of the configuration of the roof. So we can't eat, I would like to put a new roof on, but we cannot because no roofer will touch it. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to be over here. And yeah, I mean, it's, my mother's 90. She has wet macular degeneration. She cannot live there. And the, I believe the assessed value a couple of years ago was 503,000. We have been paying real estate taxes on it. I, the comps that the real estate agent did, these are all below comparables that she has. We keep decreasing the price. We're, people don't want to climb a flight of stairs in an over 55 house. And they are mighty stairs. I mean, it's not like, I mean, we have stairs in our house, but we have two hand railings. These stairs are very wide and you could not put two hand railings. It's a very unique property that we did not in any way, shape or form expect to have this much trouble with. So I ask you very deeply from the bottom of my heart, please help us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just to the tax issue, I did pull the property card earlier today to find out about the tax abatement. And it does say prior to FY 2020, it was taxed as half of a single family home. So they were taxing it 50/50, single family home, and then they converted it into this one family after that. So the tax basis was switched.
What year?
FY 2020.
Does the board think it would be helpful to have some information regarding market value or comps or?
I didn't think so either.
Yeah, I'll try again. I, I would urge the board, let's look at the hardship for these people. And let's, as an aside, let's go back to the planning board and to the building staff, because this is a potential, it's a problem now and it's gonna be a problem in the future. And I think to educate the planning board not to allow this to happen again. And I don't understand how they ever allowed that to be built. Because it's, essentially, it's a duplex, right? And it was not, I think if you went back and looked at the building plans, it would be for two single family houses, which is wrong. I mean, I think, I think the town of Westford screwed up to allow this to happen.
Melissa, if this was brand new, how would you?
It would have to be a condo.
Yeah.
Yeah, but any shared walls in Massachusetts, you're automatically a condo. It's the only way.
With dots and everything.
Yeah, to share expenses.
One of the.
The, I'm just, I'm sorry, Mr. Belkow, but the only differences here is they don't share earth. So I'm sure that's why they didn't make it a condo. That's the weird thing about this, is that usually with a condominium, the underlying fee in the, you know, the, the land itself is owned by everybody. And then the people own the structure that's on the, the fee, right? So they own everything inside of the box and they share expenses in what's the actual land. In this instance, the, there's actually a dotted line right down the middle that is the land. So essentially, what they approved was two units connected with no setback. Uh, not, not really a condo. So I would have just never created lots five and six, or I would have asked for the non-creation of the lot line, made one big lot and created a condo. This is, this is odd. Sorry, Jeff, I'm sorry. I interrupted your question.
You answered my question.
Okay.
Does the board have any other questions or?
I was wondering, if we make a decision in favor of the applicant, I mean, does that take the whole issue for the whole building, whole structure?
No, they, they have to go back to the planning board. This is a, a two-step process, as I understand it. So all you're really.
Passing it back to the planning board.
And I think, and I would hope that we're showing some forbearance for the people who are in this pickle, at least half the people in the pickle. Because it's not, all the things are not gonna go away. They're still gonna deal with them, but at least it lets them, pushes the ball, moves the ball maybe a yard or two down the field.
Which is where I thought I would have been, quite honestly, to Mr. Earl's point. I thought that I would have started at the planning board level, which is, I actually had applied there. I had filed for a modification to the planning board to revise the decision. They said no. Well, they didn't say no. It was never heard in front of the planning board. That's when we decided we'd push it to council and council said I had to come here first. So.
I mean, but if we do it for 115, are we gonna go through the whole process for 113?
It could.
Is there any way to?
I think we should do it for 113. Yeah, right.
Is there any way we can do it once for both units, the right way?
We'd have to modify this. We couldn't do it on the floor because we've only done on a butters list and a, and a notice for one property. So we'd have to renotice and then come back in November.
I, I think what Melissa's gonna be involved in is, but I think the planning board has to figure out how they can get to a condominium from two separate houses.
What I was wondering is, they, can they potentially connect the lots together, right?
And then. All it takes is time and money.
All right. So, but you guys bring up another interesting point. I like where your head's going. But if you, even if you combine these two lots, it's not a conforming lot in the town of Westford. So it would take another two-step tango here. If that's the route that we went, if we went to the planning board and they said, we're gonna approve the 55 and over removal requirement, if you combine these lots into one and create a condominium, I'd then have to come back here and get a variance for an undersized lot and a duplex on an undersized lot and then go back to the planning board and allow them to do it as part of the flex. So there is a way, and I'm not saying that we, it can't be done. I'm just saying it's a little bit more of a dance to get there. And at any point, either of these boards, you included, could say no. I mean, and Mr. Brickrow is correct. I mean, what I'm asking for tonight is really a procedural request, Mr. Earl. It's a procedural request to get me to the planning board, to ask them if they would modify the original decision. They could say no. I haven't even had a discussion item with the planning board yet, um, because it would be, uh, you know, putting the cart in front of the horse to do that. It doesn't make any sense for me to have a discussion with the planning board if the zoning board isn't going to waive the procedural requirement for me to get there.
All right. So, there's no other?
Mr. Chair, if you're gonna close the public hearing.
I do want to get a flavor for.
Yes, I would ask, yes, for a straw poll.
I, I come in tonight thinking that I was a hot no, after reading this. And now, um, like Mr. Earl says, this is a, this is a mess. And it should have never been built. And I think we owe it to these two homeowners to make it right for them, or at least give them the chance to make it right. Definitely.
Well, ditto that exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think we've all been racking our brains.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, it, it really puts this board in a tough situation, you know? We just, we've worked so hard to get to that point. Now, it's just counter to what we believe in, that's all. So, but after hearing all the facts, um, it does sound like there was a situation here that wasn't right. So if we have an opportunity to help make that right, then we should probably do that. So, um, I'd probably vote in favor for you too. So.
Great. Thank you.
So you want to proceed?
Please proceed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, so any other, no other questions?
No, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I guess.
How can we word this so that you can, we're gonna go for the overall picture? Like let these folks go to the planning board, get, see what the planning board thinks and then try to do something with 113?
Well, my. Well, I guess that's, we can only deal with what we have here. Right, yeah, right.
My suggestion is we have our able right-hand man here. He can carry that forward with Jeff and other members of the land management team. And Melissa, I'm sure will weigh in and they'll carry up. My expectation is you'll carry the ball forward and we have done our small.
I didn't want to speak for the resident 113, but is that something you are looking, would be looking to do?
Can I go?
Yes, please.
Well, we close the meeting. Sorry, I'm sorry, we close the meeting. So.
Close the meeting.
Sorry about that.
Just one, a little asterisk about duplicating this effort again one more time to what gentleman, Mr. Brickow.
I guess what we're saying here is we're dealing with 114 tonight.
It's not joint petition.
Well, 113 would be another issue. We've closed the public hearing. We can't take any more public comment. So, um, sorry, I mean, that, that's just for the procedures.
Just be efficient, you know, not duplicate the whole thing.
Um, so we don't have any conditions. We're just, we're just gonna vote to approve the variance from section 7.2.7 to remove the, the density bonus requirement and remove the age restriction. So the density bonus requirement, what is that?
That's 7.28, but 7.27 is the math. So I would think your motion would be, but just a point of procedure. I know the hearing's closed. Is that subject to the planning board's modification of their approval?
So that would be something.
Yeah. Because the way the math worked in getting the density bonus, you had to have two age restricted units. They're asking for a variance from that. That's their petition for you.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Joe. Um, so we remove the density bonus requirement and remove the age restriction on unit showing on lot five of the Tall Pine subdivision plan. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second. Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote in favor too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. We don't really have any general business, Joe?
I miss you.
No? Okay. No correspondence, sorry.
No.
Okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?